Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Dickerson.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner White O'Neal.
Here.
Sheriff Seifert.
Here. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 7?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Kelly. I wasn't here in the second.
Oh, that's right. I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain, Chair.
And one abstention. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we will have a public comment period. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or is otherwise directed by the chair. Would anyone like to speak? I see no one wanting to speak. We're going to go on to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move that we approve... Oh.
You got that?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I will recuse myself from item number three as I have a business relationship with the architect.
So can we hear a motion for items one and two?
I move that we approve consent calendar items number one and two as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any... Well, we're all in aye, so it passes. Item number three. Do I hear a motion?
I'll go ahead and move that we approve item number three on the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I will abstain from that.
Thank you. And one abstention. Okay. About the commissions. Okay. Number three and four. So moving on to item number four. Can we hear from staff?
Yes. Good evening. Ryan Hostetter, Planning Manager. I'd like to introduce Lauren Marsiglia, Assistant Planner, who's been working on this project and will be making the presentation for you.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Marsiglia. I'm an Assistant Planner with the City of Santa Maria. Tonight, I'm presenting the Great American Self-Storage Project. This is located at 1265 West Bedaravia Road. This is a vicinity map of the site. It's located at the intersection of West Bedaravia Road and South Blosser Road. The site is currently vacant. It's 7.4 acres. Immediately north of the site is an open space district, and this is within the planned development, commercial manufacturing zoning districts. This is a site plan of the proposed projects. It'll be about 110,000 square feet of storage. The applicant is proposing 513 storage units within these buildings around the site. And Building L will be temperature-controlled wine storage. And they're also proposing RV parking, 40 spaces along the east of the site and the north end of the property. The next slide will show the landscaping that they're proposing. It's 52,170 square feet. And the applicant also meets and exceeds their parking requirement. 51 spaces are required, and they provided 71 spaces. This is just a general overview of where the landscaping will be planted. 15% of landscaping is required in the PD-CM zone. The applicant is proposing 16%. So the landscaping will mostly be along the frontage of the property on West Bedaravia Road with the retention basin in the rear. The site will also include an onsite manager's office. The municipal code requires two covered spaces, which the applicant is providing with his garage. The office will be here for customers to come in with a sales... An area for sales in the front. The second floor is the... Will be the living quarters for the onsite manager. This is just a general layout of the floor plan with a kitchen, a study, two bedrooms, and a living room. So 513 storage units are being proposed. This is just an elevation of what those units will look like onsite. Most of them will be served by roll-up doors. The applicant is proposing covered RV storage. They'll be covered on three sides. This will provide screening for the residential zoning district in the rear. And they're also proposing an eight-foot CMU wall, which isn't shown here, but it'll help to screen the RV storage. So this is just an elevation of the onsite manager's office along Bedaravia Road. The applicant is proposing a few bike parking spaces. And the column... Well, there'll be some traditional Spanish architectural elements featured into the architecture. So the applicant's proposing some decorative rosettes over some steel lattices. And so this is the southeast corner of the site, which is closer to Blosser and Bedaravia. And the southwest corner, which also features a strong corner features with the rosettes and the steel lattices. This is just an overview of what the applicant is interested in proposing for their materials and colors. Most of the buildings will be stucco using the Cafe Mocha style. There'll also be some decorative trim and accent colors shown here with the stone wainscoting along the bottom of the buildings. As I said previously, the site is currently vacant. This is looking north. There's already a CMU wall that screens the property from the residential zone in the rear. And then surrounding the site over here to the east is the next-door industrial use offices. This is looking west. Again, it's... The parcels adjacent to this property are all currently occupied. Looking east, this site is currently slightly below grade, but the CMU wall along the... Near the RV storage will screen that from the nearby uses. And this is looking south towards Bedaravia Road. So before I read the staff recommendation, we did make a minor revision to one of the conditions based on a conversation with our staff and fire department. This is for condition number 46 regarding emergency contact information. The change is mostly to remove any reference to the Knox box since the applicant would be unable to provide a Knox key or Knox box key to access all storage units. They've discussed this with our fire department staff, and fire staff are fine with this. So the condition will now read, "An emergency contact information form shall be filled out and returned to the fire department prior to the issuance of a building permit." So staff's recommendation is that Planning Commission by motion approve planned development permit PD 2017-0019 with a revision to condition number 46.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions?
Thank you.
I have two questions, just about the RV storage. I couldn't tell from the rendering, are there going to be like dividers in between each stall? You said covered on three sides. You just meant like the whole area will be covered, but each RV doesn't have its own
I do... I believe that they will be... There will be slots between each stall.
Okay. And then is there a standard size, or is it going to max out at what they're able to park in there? I mean, there's a big variation between RVs, so the stalls are going to be able to accommodate all sizes, or do you know that? Or I guess the applicant can address that.
Yeah, we'll get clarification from the applicant on that.
Okay. And then my other question was just about the exterior landscaping, the lawn layout. Are we okay with the lawn? It seems like that's not maybe not... Is it following our water ordinances like other landscaping products might be a better choice?
This is a simplistic view of what the landscaping will look like. It'll be a mixture of shrubs and medium-sized to large-sized trees.
Oh, okay.
We were... Unfortunately, we were unable to provide a conceptual landscape plan before the hearing, but the... I mean, the plans that we had were a little too busy to project on the screen.
Okay. But the landscaping will include more of a tree scape and shrubs and not just flat grass?
That's correct. And it meets our Welo standards for the state.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Lauren, I have a question. You had a 40-foot maximum height on a lot of those slides. Is there anything that gets close to that?
No. The tallest building being proposed is 30 feet, so none of them exceed the zoning code's requirements.
Which building is that? Is it on the... Is it on Blosser, or is it...
So it's Building E, which is...
The one that's kind of in the middle of the project.
Yes, it's before the... It's this building right here. So essential to the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Dickerson. Do we have a presentation from the applicant? Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes. Good evening. My name is David Pick. I live at 1609 Elveroy Way, solving. I'm a developer of self-storages, 5 million square feet, 40 years in the business, have been involved in the last three that have been built near city in the last nine years, and we're the owner, operator of one for the last 10 years, which will be the sister facility for this. I have... First of all, we agree to all of the conditions of development. We're not seeking any wages. The only thing we'd like you to do is clarify some colors. Sometimes when we copy these, no matter how good the fax machine is, they come out looking a little silly. I noticed on the small ones, they look like they're an army color. They really aren't. I'd like you to look at what I've brought you is the three-inch stucco, their color coat, their color stucco, the three-inch stuccos, and then a backup set of colors and also a colored chart. What are the things in this color chart? Textures. You'll need to look at this. Or what we call in the industry float for the stucco. I think about six, seven years ago, when I was building a facility here, one of your predecessors told me that in the afternoon, with the continual winds, we have some agricultural dust and sand. And they specified that that's time for a specific building.
So, excuse me, Mr. Pick, did you mark the actual colors on the sheet here? Or we can do that. That's all right.
The actual colors.
Navajo white.
Oh, Cafe Mocha. Okay, there it is.
So you got it?
And El Dorado. And Caramella.
I'm sorry. It's a little bit better than reproductions. As I've told your staff, the question we'll have for you is, do you like the colors?
Okay, here they are.
And secondly, what kind of texture do you want? I understand that the standard 1620 stucco texture, also sometimes referred to the Spanish one, catches a lot of dust in the afternoon coming in from the agricultural fields, and it changes the color of the building. On the colored chip fold-out, it has textures, and you may want to use... You may want us to use a lace finish or what they call a Santa Barbara finish. It's your city. You pick the colors.
Thank you.
And the texture, please. I was also asked to bring a couple of slides. I'm old-fashioned. I don't have slides, but I've got a couple of pictures. One is the Great American Storage next to Toys R Us and the Old Costco. One for you and one for the staff. Another is in Palm Springs, terrible modern Palm Springs design. And the third one is one we're kind of proud of. It's a plantation look. And that'll give you a little bit of an idea of what we're trying to do.
Perfect.
The top facility on the two... Where there's two photos on one page is the sister facility to the one we're proposing. They look somewhat similar. They're designed to look somewhat similar. They share the same name. And the answer to the one commissioner is yes. I prefer not an open barn. I prefer to have interior partitions. They're metal, they go to the roof, and they really offer the RV client more privacy.
Right.
I mean, those RVs are getting really expensive.
Right.
So it's three-sided. It will be open. Not to confuse you, we're building one that's entirely closed in Palm Springs at the current time, and they're 39 foot wide and 55 foot deep, and they have an airplane hangar door, but I don't think... I don't think we have the need for that up here. We don't have the blow sand and the heat.
Right. Do you have the ability to add doors at a later date? I believe those buildings are facing into the wind.
I'm sorry with... At 79 with these hearing aids, sometimes I can't quite...
The wind is a factor in Santa Maria. Do you have the ability later to come back and retrofit with doors if necessary? Is that...
We do something very unusual with the doors. Nobody else does it. We found a product because... And we build in Palm Springs, and we have a lot of blow sand. We found a product back east that of all things is used primarily in the snow area. And I don't want you to get too confused with self-storages, but we all have roll-up doors. It's a big door, and as you roll it down, the coil gets smaller. And what occurs at the top of the door is a two, two-and-a-half inch gap. On smaller doors that are shorter, an inch and a half. So what we went out and we've done, we just did this in Goleta on a facility that's nominated for Facility of the Year. We put in a brush mechanism that mounts at the top of the door header, and it comes down at a... It's two and a half, three inches in length, and it comes down at an angle, and it eliminates 98% of the dust that blows up. One of our biggest problems. I've been doing this for 40 years. My wife picked on me for 15. She didn't want to put it in because you come back three months later, and it's got dust on it, and you're having to sell people furniture covers, and they don't have the money for that. So that's what we do. We're doing it here. We did it in Goleta. We have two facilities under construction in Palm Springs. We'll do it there. The only place I won't have to do it is at Kona. We have a little wind there, but it brings in fresh air.
Perfect.
But... Yes, sir. That's... We've tried... We'll tell you that it's 98% dust-free.
Excellent.
Because it is. It's a continual problem.
Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is it just the one access off of Bedaravia?
I'm sorry, the access?
Yeah. Is it just off of Bedaravia?
It's on Bedaravia.
But that's the only one, right?
And in fact, what we did, and that's a very, very, very good question, because over the period of years, self-storages have gradually done a few things, and one of them we noticed, and we noticed it in this town, is you've allowed us to come in from some of the back streets and industrial areas, and we're taking highways with visibility. And we were concerned with this. On Enos, our existing facility, behind Toys R Us and across with the church retention basins across the street from us, when we have a lien sale, we get 28, 38, 40 people. I think they almost watch that TV program. It was Storage Wars or something like that. Don't believe it. But they show up, and they all have a truck because they have to take the stuff off the facility once they've purchased it. And this doesn't always... Lien sales, we get abandoned units. There's a whole bunch of these. And the good question is, where do you park? Well, we've always, and in this city, the only self-storage you have, it's a very old one, that's on a major street with no parking, is on Stoll Crocker's Lockers. I sold it as a broker to the current owner, and we're trying to clean it up. My concern on this facility is there's no parking on Bedaravia. And so another unusual thing, we have 510 units, and in this community, and I'm not picking on it because I do all my shopping here, I live 28 miles down the road, more than 50% of our tenants pay cash or check at the office in a seven-day period at a time at the end of the month. Well, if I've got 510 units, I can expect to see 250. In fact, if I make smaller units, the five-by-fives, the five-by-tens, the five-by-seven-haves, we call those small. A medium unit's 10 by 10. A 10 by 20 is like a single-car garage. 10 by 10 is half of that. The small units, Public Storage tells us that, our own records tell us that. Be candid, we stopped building five-by-fives and five-by-sevens. We build five-by-tens because husbands like myself are pressured by our wife to get a whole bunch of stuff out of the garage. And we call around, and we ask self-storagers, what's the cheapest one you have? And so we build some five-by-tens, but we don't deliberately rent them. But what happens in that group of small units is you have a 90-day turnover, an average 90-day turnover. And unfortunately, in our community, most of the people renting the small units, Public Storage has a name for them. They call them transients, and I think that's disgusting. But a lot of your apartment residents, and even some of the homes, will find that 85% of the people renting small units pay cash. When I oversaw the purchase and the turnaround of Crocker's Lockers, 92% of the people in the small units didn't have a checking account.
Thank you.
There's a whole bunch of reasons for that.
Sure.
Social reasons, a whole bunch of reasons. Banks that don't want to cash checks unless you have... But the point is, when we start making... If we're building a bigger unit with a preponderance of small units, 30%, for instance, that 50, 60% sneaks up. And the same question everybody asks me. You're the smartest planning director in 40 years of doing this work. She's the first one that asked me tough questions. "Mr. Pick, where do they park?" Well, on Enos, they park on Enos, on both sides of it.
Yes.
And I could go crossroads. They park on, you know...
I think you have the parking issue covered in your presentation.
So what I did is we increased the amount of parking, and to answer the commissioner's question, we have two driveways. The driveway on the left is 300 and some feet deep. If we get too many people who can't park on Bedaravia, they can park on the driveway on the west, and that'll take the overflow.
Excellent.
But it's a great question. Thank you.
Any more questions? Commissioner Dickerson.
Mr. Lopez, what was your question? My question was, was the only access off of Bedaravia the one driveway by the office?
Is that the only access?
There's actually two driveways on Bedaravia. And I will... Let me tell you something.
So are they both right in, right out? Or are they both... Are you able to get in?
In and out.
In and out?
And I am working with a neighbor on the west. Your planning director doesn't know this yet, but that property owner called me, and he said... And his driveway is 10 feet away. He said, "I've had a suggestion. Can we combine driveways and make a bigger driveway that will serve our facility and yours, and we won't have to have that 10-foot strip between us?" And I haven't asked...
Yeah, I believe that's a different conversation.
We haven't asked Ryan yet, but we're working on that. So eventually, well, by the time we're built, unless we run into an objection, we'll have a 40, 45-foot driveway.
Excellent. But for right now, we have two access points off of Bedaravia?
That's our two accesses, a right turn, left turn. You may want to make the first one right turn only, but that's... As a next planning commissioner and chairman of a planning commission, I would... I'd probably make that recommendation.
Well, thank you very much.
Your call.
Anything else?
No.
I think that'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to bring it back to staff. So have you guys addressed the in and outs on Bedaravia? Have you looked at that?
Yes, sir. The two driveways here, both of them have motorized gates for the customers to enter and exit. So this first motorized gate is right here. That's near the manager's office. And the second one is... It gives the customers access to the wine storage and RV parking in the rear.
Is there sufficient stacking at the first one?
Sufficient.
Stacking as... Because people are going to come in with trailers. It looks like there's plenty of room to get a car and a trailer and everything off of Bedaravia right there.
Oh, yes. It meets our zoning requirements for vehicle widths.
And as far as the right-in, right-out, I would suggest we refer to Public Works, Mr. Baez, as he's reviewed this as well and can provide info on that.
Excellent. Mr. Baez?
Mr. Chair. Excuse me. Mr. Chair, there is on the... Looking at the exhibit, the driveway that is furthest down on the screen, which is furthest to the east, there is a median in the roadway, which will not allow right turns... Or, excuse me, left turns out. However, the driveway to the... On the westerly boundary, there is a center-left turn lane, so they can negotiate a left and right turns... Or left turns out, and so it's a left and right.
You're happy with it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve planned development permit PD 2017-0019 for Great American Self-Storage on West Bedaravia.
Do I hear a second?
Chair.
Number 46.
Oh, yes.
And I believe the colors, we wanted to just get those... We had a recommendation on the slide for colors, but just to make sure that that's what the commission wants to see.
Is that what we've been showing?
Yes.
Yes. Did Mr. Pick need our input on the surface, or is he going to... The smooth surface versus the stucco surface?
The question is, is there a preference by the commission? And to be able to provide that input and wrap that into the approval. So it's your choice. We could do the stucco as it is on the screen, or I think there was the lace that was the other option.
The Santa Barbara finish?
Yes.
The smooth finish?
Sheriff Seifert, you... Maybe you have some experience with...
Chair Seifer, maybe you have some experience with this?
The lace gets very dirty.
Okay.
It fills up with dirt, all the cracks and stuff.
So you would suggest which?
Just like we've shown here, I think that's a fine for Betaravia.
Okay.
It's a lot, very windy, very dirty.
Okay.
I think that's going to be easy to clean, and it's going to hold the least amount of dirt. So I would go with what's shown.
By the way, that's the roof material.
We're back to staff here, if we need you, we'll call you, thank you. Do we have, so we've started a motion?
Well, I'll revise my motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve plan development permit, PD 2017-0019, with modification to item number 46, as presented by staff, with the color finish, colors and finishes as presented by the applicant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pick. Moving on to number five. We're looking at the CCLI Self-Storage Plan Development Permit, 1400 block of West Betaravia Road, and we will hear from staff.
Now I'll introduce Frank Albre, our senior planner, who's going to provide a presentation on this project.
Good morning, Chair, members of the commission. We have a...
Her phone. There you go.
So the project site is a vacant 3.6-acre property in the PDCM zone. Properties to the west, east, and south of the project site are in the same PDCM or commercial manufacturing zone, and for the most part are developed, or at least partially developed. I will point out that south of the project site, there is a, excuse me, a Santa Barbara County-owned parcel, which is the regional flood control for the larger subdivision that took place a number of years ago for this industrial area. So the proposal is to build a self-storage facility, approximately 134,000 square feet of facility, and it will include a 1,500-square-foot caretaker's unit, which is in this location here on the second floor. And as you can see on the drawing, there's also a 1,500-square-foot office on the lower floor. These will be connected to each other. There's going to be over 1,000 rentable storage units, and then also multiple exterior RV storage parking spaces in this area here. I do want to point out, and you can see it vaguely on the plan here, there's a little circle just above the pointer, that is the location of a former oil well. The oil well has been capped, but not to the current standards of the Division of Geothermal They did require that the proposal not build over this oil facility. There is a condition that the applicant abandon the, further abandon the oil well, or reabandon, to bring it up to current standards. However, in recent conversations with the applicant since the time of the staff report writing, they've been speaking with Dogger, Divisional Oil and Gas and Geothermal Resources. They're indicating that reabandonment might not now be necessary, since they did revise the plan to not show the building over the oil well. So that will be determined through review at the building permit stage. I do want to bring up the parking locations. Staff and the applicant have gone back and forth on the parking, and I do want to also point out that the site plan that you're seeing on the screen is slightly different than the one that you received in your packet. The main difference is that the site plan in the packet, and you'll have noted this in the staff report, spoke to the aisle width, and the fact that only this aisle along Building D had the adjacent loading spaces. And the loading spaces have to be separate in addition to the required fire lanes. So the applicant has revised the site plan since the time the packet was put together, and now has provided that same loading on, between Buildings A and B, and then also adjacent to Building C. So the parking has revised slightly. They are providing 40 parking spaces within the facility. The minimum code requirement is one for every 10, which would equate to quite a few spaces in this facility. The Institute of Traffic Engineers, which we go to, to determine parking requirements and also vehicle trips, would indicate these storage facilities have a much lower parking demand than what our code requirement is. So the applicant is providing 40 internal stalls, and staff is comfortable with that There's also five stalls as required by code adjacent to the office, and then there is one enclosed parking space provided for the caretaker unit. Our code requires two, but again, through the plan development permit, the applicant can request the reduction, and staff is also in support of that reduction.
Frank, just a real quick... So basically, the lanes have gone to the 35 feet as originally requested by staff?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. So you'll know, much of the staff report talked about how it was not satisfying staff's requirements, now they are. And one other point I will make at this time, this internal aisle here between Buildings C and B is a situation where they actually have ramps on either side, going up to a flat second-level loading and drive area. So the vehicles will be able to pull up to the second level and access the internal hallways of Building B and C from the second-floor level. And so I'll move on to the floor plans, which show some of that second floor. So here's the first-floor level. As you see along here, units are accessed from roll-up doors in the front, but in these portions, the units are accessed through internal hallways. So the second-floor floor plan, this will be where the ramp is, in this area will be the flat landing at the second floor, and the tenants, or not tenants, the customers, will be able to access their units through these internal hallways, through these doors, two doors each at the second-floor level. So moving on to the elevations, the prominent feature facing Betaravia will be the top elevation here. As you can see, there's varying heights, 17 feet for the lowest element, 22 for the mid-range element, and up to 30 feet for the tall corner elements. There'll be a decorative wrought iron gate with pilasters. I'll go over the materials in a moment, but the striping is actually alternating colors of split-face block with a stucco wall background. That split-face block is also mimicked in the pilasters for the decorative fence. So then you see a south elevation. This is the elevation that faces the large regional detention basin. So this really won't have any public views, they've provided the decorative wrought iron fence along this backside as well. One other thing I'll note from this elevation is that you'll, as driving by Betaravia, if the project is approved and then completed, there'll be very limited views to the actual roll-up doors, only through this main entry gate, and then there's an emergency access gate on the west side, there's limited views. And the last thing I'll point out on this elevation is that these are window elements on the portions of the building, and it would appear that you're seeing storage unit doorways, and these are actually just faux doorways for effect. So there'll never be any storage material, and staff has included a condition that there's no signage, no materials, no advertising in these windows. So you'll just see these clear openings to reference what's internal to the building. Here's the west elevation. This portion of the west elevation is closest to Betaravia Road, and cars driving by will see this elevation. These elevations are far enough back to where they won't get much view. And then the east elevation, there's one long, narrow building, Building D, and it is only 14 feet height, and as you can see, it's not much finestration on this building, but it will be completely blocked by the adjacent properties. Here's the materials, and again, here's the two colors of split-face block, the gate and pilaster detail, and they are including decorative caps. The colors, this looks a little bit lighter than actuality, and there's turquoise for the top trim, and large portions of the elevations, and I'll go back to the elevation page here, and it'll be these elements here, and the tower element, will be faced with an architectural metal wall panel. And these are not simply just corrugated panels, but they're actual architectural panels. The fasteners are hidden, so it'll just provide this smooth metal surface, and these are in a gray color. Lastly, I'll move on to the landscape plan. The applicant is asking for a reduction in the amount of landscaping. This site would typically require 15%, and they're providing just under 12%. A good portion of that landscape area is provided as frontage, and as you can see the tree plan here. Staff is satisfied with this layout and also supportive of the reduction, as the remainder of the site is only going to be viewed from neighboring customer, or neighboring properties, the rears of neighboring properties, and the customers. One other thing I'll point out, this is a sewer easement, and the applicant has worked with staff to make sure that this was not isolated or blocked by a building. And then this area is the applicant's main drainage area. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission by motion approve the plan development permit, PD 2017-0016. And I know the applicant is here, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Albre. Do we have any questions for Frank?
I have a quick question. Frank, do you happen to...
Commissioner Dickerson.
Do you happen to have something that shows this ramp, or any of these ramps?
I don't have any sections or renderings of the ramp. Let me go back to...
Can you give me an idea of what we're talking about as far as the construction elements of it, or the, is it...
The construction details, I will have to defer to the applicant, so I don't know how that will work. I do know that this portion right here will involve a retaining wall, adjacent are, is an RV, a couple of RV parking spaces. The ramp is a 10% slope, it's intended for vehicles only.
Is it a one-way up and down, or is it, do you go up the ramp and then have to reverse out?
No, there's ramps on both sides, so a vehicle entering from one side will be able to drive all the way through.
Okay. And is that considered to be like a, I mean, is that being posted as a one-way, or do you end up with a situation where you might have people nose against nose?
Wide enough for a two-way drive aisle.
Oh, really? Okay.
The width is, I believe it's 28 feet.
Okay.
Funny.
And we have gone over this, and the applicant has gone over this with both planning and also our fire department, and the fire department is satisfied with this access for fire response.
And to tag on to that, Commissioner Dickerson. I did have a conversation with the building department about this, I had some concerns also, and they said they are working with the applicant, they've played with a few different ideas, and they felt that they can work out the way it's going to be constructed.
Okay, okay. So you're satisfied with potential weight issues?
The billing department said they would handle that.
Okay.
And that they would make sure that it would meet all the requirements.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do we have any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm hung up a little bit on the ramps myself. I'm a little concerned that no elevator of any kind, I mean, you need a car to get up to the second floor, you need a car to get down from the second floor, and there's no parking, so you're just going to stop on the second floor and block space, and if you get more than four people that need to get up there, how, they just have to wait down at the bottom? How does that, it doesn't, it doesn't seem sufficient to me.
The summary that you've provided is staff's understanding. I'll leave further details to the applicant, but I will mention that one thing staff has included is that there be a minimum 12-foot-wide drive aisle kept clear at all times, and that way you won't have a situation of a vehicle blocked. So that will be no parking, no loading, clear, and there will be approximately six loading spaces available on top of that ramp.
And that's only on both Building B and Building C?
This area will serve the second floors of both Buildings...
So between both buildings, there will be six spots to load and unload at any given time?
Correct.
And so if you're the seventh car, you just have to wait down at the bottom?
That is my understanding of...
Or drive around, or whatever.
The applicant's proposal.
Okay, I don't, I don't know about that. Okay, well...
So Frank, just to tag on to that one, so what do we have, we have an 8, and 8, and a 12? Or, I mean, you said you had two aisles, but we're going to keep one of them open at all times.
Right.
So that means we really only have one aisle?
So unless they can work it out, there'll be one essentially passing lane and one loading zone area.
And who polices that? I mean, it's caretaker, just, I mean...
The, being that this is not a fire lane, I don't think the city would be enforcing that other than through conditions of approval, and that requirement is a condition of approval. But the internal workings of the site will, at, the first level will be the manager of the facility.
And then I had just another question about parking, so, not parking, loading. So the loading spots that are lined up parallel to Building D?
Correct.
They're blocking people's access to their unit, right? Like if somebody's there, I mean, obviously, you're going to park as close to your own unit as possible, but...
Right.
If you're not in front of your unit, you're blocking somebody else's unit.
That's a potential. One thing I will point out is that our code requires an equivalent number of parking spaces, when talking about the parking spaces for the storage units. It dictates that the parking spaces will not be striped, but will, the area will simply be striped as a loading zone. So these lines and stall numbers and so forth are not actually going to show up.
Right.
In reality, you're just going to have a striped loading zone. So that will allow people some flexibility, how far they pull up, and so forth. But yes, the idea is that to provide a parking space that doesn't block a door would result in a huge amount of parking and paving. And from the information from the ITE studies, that... And from the information from the ITE studies, that amount that is stated in our code is perhaps a little excessive. The applicant has provided some additional information regarding the ITE studies and their analysis. And essentially, they base it on the number of trips. This facility should have approximately 320 plus or minus trips.
Per day?
Per day. And a trip is both going and leaving.
Oh.
So cut that in half for the number of customers. And then split that number among the 16 hours the facility is open. And the applicant concludes that during the busiest time, the PM, the afternoon peak hour, they may have up to 16.3, 17 customers at any one time. And that is borne out by the ITE information. So the 40 spaces internal to the site appear to, staff, to be satisfactory. The other aspect about this is too, it's very unlikely that you'll get vehicles stacking onto Beteravia Road or exiting the site if they can't find a space near their unit. Most likely, they'll double park, stop in the fire lane, which we're not endorsing.
Right.
But this, unlike a lot of parking reductions and parking situations that we see, this one has very little chance of negatively affecting neighboring property owners.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Dickerson.
Yeah. How many units on the second floor in B and C? I mean, I'm kind of looking at this thing, and I've got a first-floor plan map. Is it the same, are they mirror each other, second, first, and second?
No, they don't. As you see, this is the first-floor plan.
Yeah.
Building A and Building D are single stories, so we disregard those. But you can see the configuration, particularly with the larger outside access storage units going to Building B, it's got a slightly different interior configuration.
That's the second floor?
This is the second floor.
So you're talking about hundreds of units?
I don't have a precise number, but I would say that is correct.
So you've got six designated parking spaces for loading and unloading for hundreds of units?
That is correct.
Okay. That was my question.
And that brings up a whole nother question for me, Mr. Abrow, is, I don't see, I'm sure fire has taken a look at this?
Yes.
Once you go in, how do you get out? And what are we gonna provide? I mean, has fire looked at this plan, and they're happy with the ins and the outs?
My, yes, they are. And the building division has also looked at the plan. There are stairwells on either ends of the building and exits on the ground floors. And we always treat these plans that we see at the Planning Commission level as concept. It will, these, once, if approved and once through building permit, both fire department and the building division will also see these again, and they will not issue building permits if the exiting ingress egress required by code is not provided. But my understanding is the plans before you conceptually meet those ingress egress requirements.
It seems a little lacking to me, on such a big facility.
And the, yeah, and the, and not being able to get in on your own feet. You have to bring a car up there, which is just a whole, whole added layer of potential risk. So anyway, we'll hear from the applicant, I guess.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank, is there anything that the city code prohibits from being stored in a self-storage?
That, I believe, would default to fire codes. I don't know, not in our zoning ordinance.
But the landlord or the owner would make those rules of what can be stored, what could be grown, what could be kept in these lockers?
Correct.
Good question.
Thank you. In terms of grown, or the other potential is occupancy?
Right.
That would be contrary to the concept that's being presented, and therefore, if the Plan Development Permit is approved, it would be contrary to the Plan Development Permit, and we could enforce the description in the Plan Development Permit.
You concur with that, Mr. Senko?
Mr. Chair, yes. The growing, occupying would not be permitted under our code, aside from the other issue.
So do we have a list of materials that you can store and don't store?
No, no. Well, reference to the growing, if he was talking personal marijuana, that's only gonna be allowed in a residential parcel, so.
What about the other, I mean, what about hazardous materials or flammable?
Fire code and building code, that would...
That would be handled under building?
Yes.
Thank you.
We don't have any other rules that are specific to storage units.
Okay. Would the applicant like to make a presentation? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Bruce Jordan. My address is 131 Calle Iglesia, San Clemente, California. I thank you for the time to address the commission tonight. I also wanted to compliment your planning staff, who has worked very diligently and very professionally with our office to arrive at what we think is an exceptional solution. I heard that the commission has a lot of questions about the ramp, about parking, about access. I'm gonna start by telling you that I've probably designed more self-storage than any architect on earth. I've designed 4,200 self-storage projects, United States, Canada, every state in the Union, Europe, South America, Aruba, Panama, pick a country, I've designed one there. Well, we're regularly consulted to, consult the cities on ordinances for self-storage. I've won national design awards probably 25 times on projects we've designed. We're considered the leading expert in the United States for the innovation of architectural elements for self-storage. We pioneered this ramp about 30 years ago. I probably have about 200 of them in the United States. Closest one to here is Nipomo. The ramp, I'm gonna address a lot of issues, but I wanted to start with that because there was a lot of questions here with the commission. The ramp is compacted earth on fill. It's just like your driveway at home. It's no different. There's nothing below it, no structure below it. It's compacted earth with concrete. We have a concrete drive aisle. So even the retaining walls that hold back the two center buildings are tied into that concrete, makes it extremely stable. So there's, you could drive a tractor trailer rig over this, you could drive a fire truck over it, even though they don't, they won't, and that's why this is not considered a fire lane. So the point being that these ramps are done every day, and they're compacted earth on fill, there is absolutely no structural issue with them whatsoever. So they're very, very straightforward. 10% grade, a lot of city streets way steeper than that. What's not shown on this plan is we do a transition at 5% at the bottom and 5% at the top that allow for longer wheelbase vehicles to go over it. So that's why we do that. I know that there's been some issues brought up by, in fact, Mr. Pick, and I saw that he filled out a speaker request form. If the commission feels it's wise or in better instance of their time, I'm happy to let him make his comments and come in here and address all of your issues.
I'll continue as well.
Okay. Okay. So this project, I did a survey. I know that this issue of drive aisle widths came up quite a bit. It was raised, we understood from talking, and planning director, that this issue was a big issue. As pointed out by staff, our drive aisles are all 35 feet. We have the widest drive aisles of any self-storage in the city, including the one that you approved earlier tonight. Our drive aisles are wider, with the one exception of the non-fire lane that goes up between C and D, this 28. Now, that 28-foot drive aisle is the most universally accepted, call it LA County, LA City, any city in the United States uses that as a kind of a universal 20-foot fire lane, 8-foot parallel parking on one side. Very, very common to see that. Last time I was in this room, I was representing West Star Development on the Crossroad Self-Storage Project. Their drive aisles are actually smaller, and there's been absolutely no problem there. So if this project is approved, we're gonna have the self-storage with the widest drive aisles in your city. I have a sheet, and I'm happy to give a copy of it to planning. I'm just gonna hit a high spots in respect for your time. Santa Maria Self-Storage has four parking spaces, and their drive aisles are 20-foot wide. Extra Space, six parking spaces, 25-foot wide. American Self-Storage, seven spaces, 20-foot wide. Crocker's Lockers, 23-foot wide. Fortress Mini Storage, four parking spaces, 25-foot drive aisles. Super Storage, four parking spaces, 23-foot drive aisles. What I'm getting at is there's a pattern here. We so greatly exceed any parking demand need for drive aisles that we've way heavily weighted beyond any, any self-storage in your city, including the one you approved previously. So we exceed all of that. Now, I want to talk briefly about the ITE issue. This is something that we do a lot of. So what happens is when you start breaking down the peak AM and peak PM hour, you come up with how many cars are gonna be on-site at any one time. And there's also statistical data for the ITE that the average storage patron visits his goods for approximately 10 minutes, once every 60 days. So what happens is when you take an AM, PM, AM peak trip hour of five cars and a PM of eight trips, and you take those over the 10 minutes that they're gonna be there, this is a forest of, just sea of asphalt, and there's gonna be very, very few cars there. I had a planning director in the city of Orange not believing these figures, and he asked to take, take him out to a facility and show him how it worked. I took, I took him to one in Orange, it was 130,000 feet, and we waited 45 minutes for the first car to come through that gate. Self-storage is the lowest generator of commercial traffic in any commercial land use category. It is that extremely low. So I know, I heard the commission had a lot of questions, but, you know, it's gonna be overloaded, what do you do, how do you do that? The ramp, again, back to the ramp issue. We have five parallel spaces on the top of the ramp. If I break down the square footage that's on the second floor, all I need to do is park five by that ITE calculation. Now, what's happened since, since we started this and we started our construction documents, we revised the unit mix and substantially lowered the number of units on the second floor and the first floor, too. Our average unit size is a little bit bigger. So that actually, if I gave you the new number, it even have required less than we have. We're providing 46 spaces. So we're substantially overparked, is what I'm saying, and the number of units has been dropped when we did our final analysis. The way, the way that ramp works is, is somebody just drives over that ramp, again, we've talked about the structural issues of which there are none, and they park there for about 10 minutes, they unload their stuff, their carts right there inside the doors for them to wheel their stuff in, and they leave. There is no problem there. If you ever in the Nipomo area, Fort Laxa, I think, is the name of the facility that has the two-story ramp. Again, it's a very, very common iteration in self-storage today. The reason is has increased efficiencies. Elevator lobbies, elevators break down, they slow things, customers don't like them. So the deal here, the customer on the ground floor, he drives through that entry gate and he drives to his unit. Customers on the second floor do the exact same thing. It's not some awkward thing, they have to go get his car, he drives right to his second floor unit. And this has been so popular and so successful that we have calls to do this all over the country for every major developer of self-storage. We do these for Extra Space, who owns some 15,000 facilities. This is common every day, is what I'm trying to portray to you. This is not something precarious or something unusual. It's very, very common today. The landscape issue, I think there was a reference, it was just under 12% in the staff report. It's a 12%. We double-checked it. So we have 12% landscaping. And part of the reason for that, we have zero side yard setbacks, and we've used the buildings to do all of the screening of the loading. And our intent was to make this facility look like a modern upscale office building from history. Self-storage design has taken a wild, different turn in the more modern facilities. This will be considered a state-of-the-art in the city. And the reason for that is the number of patrons that sign up for these have been surveyed. What's happened, about five years ago, Public Storage spent $5 million surveying who uses these facilities and why, and what do they like, and how many customers are there, and where's this industry going? What they found was that 60% of the people signing a rental agreement for self-storage are female. And the priority to them is safety, security, and cleanliness. And so what happens is we design now a lot of these windows on the front so people can see in there and see, that's our retail product. This is what we're selling, this is what's on the inside. Again, you, those doors are not operable, so they're not in, you'll never see anybody putting anything in those units. But it's made to look like an office building and to show the potential patron what the interior of the facility is like. So it's very upscale, it's well-lit, high security. There was a question, I hate to dwell on these ramps, but I heard so many questions about it. This facility will have about 35 security cameras in it. About eight or 10 of those will be on the top of that ramp. We'll have intercoms between the second floor, the first floor, buildings at the entry points, all to the office. The communication and the security is extreme here. Only a bank might have more security. So we have a visibility to that. We have two TV monitors in the office dedicated to 16 split screens each of watching everything that's going on. And we put that manager and designed that manager's office and the manager's unit above to be in the control position to see everything that goes on in that site. Now, I also heard some questions about what can go into these. That's an important issue. The state-of-the-art in management today is trained to an extensive degree on what goes in and what goes out. And part of that, part of the reason that we put the dumpster or the trash enclosures under lock and key is so we can control everything that goes into them. If you go into any modern stores today, you'll see three-ring binders, and that's the training manuals that they use to watch what goes into this facility. It's in our client's best interest that this is run cleanly and properly, and it's a very high priority. So the building code and the fire code regulate what goes in here. You can't put bulk fertilizer, it's not allowed. The managers are trained to watch that and to see what goes in there. And when they want to throw something away, they have to come get a key, and the manager's there so they can see what they're throwing away. So this is something that the state-of-the-art self-storage has evolved into a very sophisticated operation with very sophisticated management and so forth. So these issues aren't a problem. I mentioned, you know, a number of these facilities that you have in town, I chronicled 11 of them, including the one that was approved here earlier this evening, that all have less protections, less turning radiuses, less drive aisle widths than we do. So I don't think that there's nothing that we would do here... So I don't think that there's nothing that we would do here that wouldn't create a state-of-the-art facility for this client. It's important to us, it's important to them, it's what we do. Some of our portfolios of self-storage have sold for the highest price per square foot of any in the world. And the reason is that, is we pay attention to the details. We paid attention to the details on this one. We care about it, we care about the city. The client is a long-term business person here in the city, as I'm sure you well know. So we're here to stay, this project's here to stay. We want to be proud neighbors in your community and do the right thing. So that's why we've done what we've done. I'd be happy to answer any of your questions and I would like the option to rebut anything that's brought up this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Lopez? Kelly White O'Neil?
I think I'll wait and see what Mr. Pick has to say.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Pick, if you'd come up and introduce yourself, we have three minutes.
David Pick. I've known Bruce for 30 years. I think I saw your first drive up in Corona. And I agree with a lot of things that Bruce and myself are doing, the changes, enormous changes we've seen in self-storages, in most of it in the last 10 years. But we always have the same disagreement when it comes to some safety issues and parking issues. With all due respect, when I looked at the drawings, that ramp is 14-foot high, your drawings at the city. The base is 10-foot. 14 divided by is 100-foot. 14 divided by 100 is a 14% ramp. That's what the state told me. Your drawings are wrong?
No. The second floor is at 10-foot level. My 10-foot ramp goes up at 10%.
Your drawings show them at 14-foot. And there's a basic problem. And the problem, and my goodness, I've had four discussions with the fire marshal. Our fire marshal here wants, as Bruce is aware, 24-foot clear for a fire aisle. And something unusual happens here. And even if it was 20, the width of the car is nine, but people aren't parallel parking up there. They're not parking like they're parking next to a curb. They've filled their car, their SUV, their pickup truck, they're unloading things out of the backseat, out of the trunk. And if you look up there, if you take the remaining space and you prohibited people from parking on one side, either side, you can park, parking spaces are 24-foot. And you can't get four 24-foot spaces in there. And another thing, in terms of parking, if you're pulling into a self-storage, we don't parallel park like we do on the street where we try to get within two feet of the car in front of us and two feet within car and back of us. We're unloading stuff out of the truck. They're taking up more space. If you're calling them a loading area, your code requires them to be 12-foot wide and 30-foot long. Well, you can't, that won't work. Then you just closed off the fire lane. If the car's nine, which is your requirement, if it parallel parks like it's at a curb, uh-oh, we only have 19-foot. Well, we actually have less. The problem with this is your fire marshal, according to your staff, and I met with your staff on this, has basically said, "The top area, I'm not going to rate that as a fire aisle."
Thank you, Mr. Pick.
That creates a problem.
We do appreciate your comments.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm sorry that Mr. Pick just misread the plans. The second floor is at 10-feet above the first floor. 100-foot ramp gets you up 10-feet. That's what that is. There's basically five parking spaces at the top of the ramp. This is a non-issue. This is, I got my project approved and I want the Santa Maria Planning Commission to stop the competition against me. That's what's going on here. I ask that the commission see through that. This, as I've told you, I have hundreds of these, exact configuration. I built this exact configuration in Honolulu. It was one of the most sought-after projects bought by one of the big REITs, bought by Extra Space. So this is not new. This is done all day, every day, and this is mainstream America and there is no issue here. As I mentioned at the beginning, I consult to cities on these issues. We're a national expert on parking, demand, turning radiuses, and access for self-storage projects and how they operate. That's what we do.
And your plans will show all this when you turn them in and that's what will be approved?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we fully accept all the conditions that have been imposed on the project. We have no issue with any of that. We're working on the construction documents right now and there's a whole lot of refinement that goes into those that don't go into this. So that's why you're not seeing all of that.
Appreciate that.
So this is a red herring. I ask that the commission not use its purpose for killing the competition for Mr. Pick.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. I believe we'll take that as your closing statement. Please state your name. Did you fill out a slip?
Yeah, I did.
Hang on one second. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Pat Cusack, 2175 South Bradley Road, Santa Maria. Commissioner, I didn't plan on speaking tonight because I wanted Bruce to make the presentation and I'm here with Mark Betts, Joe Kaler, our partners on this, along with Mike Bocay and Mike McNulty. But I thought it just important to make a couple of comments in light of sort of some of the discussion. So we are Mr. Jordan because we had that facility out that we had purchased to be able to use for storage. We're thinking more for auto. But now that we're developing the auto project at the Eno's Bus, the project, the land became available for us to do something else. We did have a conditional use permit to start to do outside storage and then the idea spawned with regarding to provide actual self-storage. We had conversations with Mr. Pick. He had approached us on the property. It ended up to where we couldn't come to an agreement. We moved ahead where we are owners of API with the mini-storage here in town and felt like this would be a good project. We had discussions and I don't want to go into the details of Mr. Pick, but it didn't turn out that we ended up being partners and we ended up moving in different directions. And now he has a, we think is a nice project and we think we have a nice project. We consulted with Mr. Jordan to get the best that we could possibly find. We checked his track record, we looked at the programs, we looked at the ramps, we looked at everything that took place. We're local, we're not going to do something that's foolish, we're not going to do something where people are going to get stuck and caught in different places. They are not very well-traveled as far as the number of people that go to the facilities. We've studied extensively, it's a $10-million investment and we're not making a mistake by following his lead on the design. I just wanted to assure you of that. It would be easier to do less, it would be easier to do people just on street level, but as far as utilization of the property, we only have so much land, it doesn't make sense for places that people are going to come to once a year because that's the typical turnover at some of these sizes of spaces, to just create spaces at only ground level. So it does make sense and any place new is going to second levels. It's a more innovative way and that's the direction that we want to take. The second thing is allows us to have less expensive spaces because not everybody can afford a 10-by-10 space on the ground and back their truck up to it when they need something smaller. So we were convinced that we thought it fit our community better to diversify the spaces. So that's why we have as many as we have. I'm a member of Atlas Performance Industries, has all the storage containers, so there are things that we do with storage in the community. Now we have 500 or 600 units that are out in different places. So I know just a little bit to know that I don't know enough to design it, but enough to feel confident that this is a really first-class facility. And we spent the money on the design, the split place, we could have done it cheaper. There were some other designs that are a heck of a lot less expensive than we've done, but we're here for the long haul, we want to build it, we want to own it, and we want to be proud of it. And that's kind of, that's our standpoint, that's our story. So I hope you would understand and I appreciate Mr. Pick. Everybody can say what they need to say, but I hope that you can sort of, you know, whatever, see what the different comments and take light that, I think there's plenty of room, there's 99% stored in Santa Maria. There needs to be more storage, there's plenty of room for both of us. If there's something that's fundamentally wrong, we would change it, but we're really confident that this is the best program for this location and it'll work and it won't be a problem for Mr. Pick and we can all work together and make successful businesses and quite frankly, allow our citizens and not have to drive in a Pomona or a Roy Grady trying to find storage space because we are flat, sold out. There's no space, that's what's prompting us to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Cusack. Seeing no more slips, I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Pelvis Carrying is closed. Anything? Do we have a motion?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just said, I actually like the architecture. I think it's a nice, modern look. I just, I am concerned on the parking. Looking at the previous project, it was 500-something-odd rental spaces with 71 spaces. This is double that with almost half of what the previous project had. So I just, I understand the ITE studies, but 1,000-plus units in 45 spaces, 46 spaces, five of which are outside of the property, which are for the office area, it's just, it's something to mull over. That's my only real concern with the project.
Commissioner O'Neill? White O'Neil?
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I just, as a planning commission, we review these documents all the time and I'm excited for something innovative and state-of-the-art, but since I'm not an expert on public storage, some better renderings of these ramps, some better idea of what this was because it's out of anything we've ever seen, anything I've ever seen at a storage unit. So that would have been really helpful. And in my experience, our biggest issues and our biggest complaints are when there are enough, is not enough parking. So when an applicant is asking for a pretty significant parking reduction, that's a big issue for us. It's an issue we deal with all the time. I appreciate everybody's knowledge base. I've learned more about public storage than I've ever thought I would know. So that's really helpful. I do think Mr. Pick's observation of his current space with a lot of cash customers coming in over a short period, the first, I assume it's the first to the seventh or whatever is the pay period, I suspect he's right about that and that's probably going to be an issue here, too. Doesn't mean it's not workable, but when you have 1,000 people coming to pay their fee, or 500 people if half of them paying cash, I don't know, it seems like it could be an issue.
Mr. Chairman? May I address the commission?
No.
Commissioner?
I mean, Sheriff, I like the project, it looks good. I mean, it's a nice-looking project, it's probably one of the nicest-looking self-storage units that we have. I do mirror the comments by Commissioner O'Neill and Commissioner Lopez. I am concerned about the parking. The reality is, various businesses that I've had over the years have rented and currently do rent mini-storage units. And there may be statistical information that says that people show up for a very brief period of time and then wink out of existence and wander off. I know my experience is that those averages are just that, they're averages. Quite frequently, you get people who are there for an hour, two hours, three hours. And I do take what was said as well, that as far as parking goes, it's not like regular parking. You are loading and you are unloading, which means that although you try to get in as tight as possible, the reality is people's doors are open, they've got their stuff laying all over the place. I am primarily concerned with the amount of parking that you have on that second level. And that, I'm not concerned, you've explained the construction element of the ramp and it sounds like it'll handle all the weights possible just fine and I'm fine with that. So that's not my beef with it. It really just comes down to, that is an awful lot of units to provide six spaces for. An awful lot of units, especially with the fact that the only way to really access those units is by driving your car directly up onto those ramps. I just think it's inadequate. And I want to see this project go forward. I do, as I said, I like it, I like the architectural style and I do think that it is a substantially better product than many, but I've got a real issue with that. And for me, I would rather see us go back just a little bit to the drawing board on that particular element, at least for this commissioner, as far as those second-story units and dealing with the parking. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
No.
Can I hand it to this?
You can hand it to Lauren, thank you. This is a big facility. There's a lot of spaces here. I find it hard to understand how we're going to get everybody in and out of this thing the way it's constructed. I wish you would have given us some more examples of what you've done. And I understand that this, I don't believe any of these things that you're showing us are two-stories with a ramp, except maybe the one that you said in Pomona. It's a new concept and the drawings are minimal. You didn't show us a lot of detail here as to how that ramp works. We heard 28 feet, we heard one drive aisle not being used, staying open, we've heard it's not considered a fire lane, but people have to be able to get in and out. And that whole building B upstairs, I mean, from what I can see, you don't have a count that I can find, but that is one heck of a lot of storage. And I just, I'm having a hard time understanding how you're going to access that with the small spaces that you have. It seems like we need a little bit more information as to how that's going to work.
Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to do that.
That's my opinion right now. I'm having, I like the project, I think it's in a good place, I think it's designed correctly. I think we really need to make sure that we have adequate movement around the area and that there's plenty of places for people to get in and get out with their stuff. I know you've spent a lot of time in this and you showed us and you're telling us that you have these things all over the place, but if that's true, I would have liked to have seen a little bit more information on this plan because you've said you've done it before. And I don't see it here. And we've asked questions and you've answered them, but it's still not appearing on the plan. So if you can come back to us and show us that you've got the parking, you've got the ramp, you've got everything up there, that these spaces, because I know from experience that, you know, you go into a storage area, you pull alongside on these ones here and evidently, you know, somebody's going to come along and you might be parked in front of your space or someone might be parked in front of yours. I'm not too concerned with that stuff. I think Building D, I think that's going to take care of itself like any other storage buildings do. But Building B, I mean, there is so much storage in that thing, individual storages, that I'd just like to have some assurances of how we're going to get the people in and out of there.
Mr. Chairman?
That's my opinion.
Can I add something?
Not right now. Thank you.
Can we make a motion to continue this to the next available slot so that we have a chance to see a better rendering of the ramp ingress egress and how that is really is really going to work? Since it is a novel concept for our community, it'd be nice to see it in action.
Certainly. Your commission has a prerogative to either continue the item or make a decision on the item. So we could continue it if we choose a hearing date at this point in time. We don't need to renotice it. If we want a little more time, we could continue off calendar, in which case staff would just need to renotice it, and we'd be happy to do that. So we could, let's say, let's continue it off calendar, and we'll work with the applicant and provide some additional drawings for you and work with the applicant on perhaps providing more parking, if that's what your commission would like. Perhaps some direction on, on that, and what we want the applicant to work on with staff would be helpful.
Also, Ren, did this come to a study session?
It didn't.
No, this was not.
I don't remember seeing any of this before.
No, this was not brought to a study session.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move that we continue this with input from staff on an appropriate date.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed, no abstentions. The motion is to continue. Please bring us some more information. Thank you. We're going to be moving on to Item 6, New Love East Apartments Conditional Use Permit at 575 East New Love Drive. At this time, I'm going to step away from the chair, and I'm going to have Commissioner Dickerson step in for me.
Thank you very much, Chair Seifert. This is the New Love East Apartments Conditional Use Permit at 575 East New Love Drive, and can we hear from staff?
Thank you, members of the commission. This is a proposed 1.4 acre site. The aerial shown here shows the existing use, has light industrial-type facility on that. In order to construct a proposed project, that facility will be removed. The site will be cleared and prepared for the project. The project, which the applicant would like to note, is named H N W Ventures, would consist of 18 apartment, excuse me, 16 apartment units in four two-story structures. And as you can see, the structures are oriented in pairs. The front entries are facing each other between the buildings. So this would be one front-entry corridor between Buildings D and C, and this would be the unit entries between Building A and B. The units each have a rear yard space that is private and fenced. There will also be carport facilities, recreational turf area, and a lot on the project site. In terms of the architecture, the applicant has worked with staff to add some more detail and relief to the elevations, providing shutter details and wood framing around the windows, and also providing these roof elements to accentuate the entries into the units. There's also some trellis elements to go over the sliding glass doors in the rear. Here you see the general color palette. The exteriors will be stucco, and the roofing material will be a high-definition roofing material asphalt shingle. Here you see the rear elevations with the sliding doors and the small canopies over each of the sliding glass doors. Each unit will be approximately between 1,200 and 1,300 square feet. They will have a full and a half bathroom, two upper-level bedrooms, and a living room and kitchen on the lower level. And back to the site plan, the main access is from New Love Drive. This is the only vehicular access, and there is a condition that the applicant will provide a emergency-access gate out to Bedaravia. Let's see. I'm sorry for interrupting. It's Condition Number 14. It's the second paragraph. We just need confirmation that they have the right to access that adjoining property, and with that, they'll be able to put an access door. That access door is not to be used as a normal day-to-day access, but just emergency-only.
With the documentation, should it say the applicant may include, or should it say they, they must include, as long as they have the documentation from the city attorney?
There is no requirement, no code requirement, that that additional access be required.
But it is a, it is a condition.
They, they have, the, the way the condition is written, they may choose to provide that access door.
Or they may choose not to.
Correct. If the commission would rather that they must.
I, I can come up with a whole bunch of conditions like that. Almost an infinite number. So, so there, so we can't put must if, if they have the documentation?
The commission may change that condition to say, instead of may, use the term shall.
Shall, okay. Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Certainly.
So the site provides more than the required parking spaces, which would be two spaces per unit, one covered and one uncovered. There is the opportunity to park on New Love Drive, although it would be slightly inconvenient with the flag shape of the lot, but that is an option. And here we see a graphic depicting the landscape plan. There's quite a few trees proposed for the site. There was no size indicated, so the staff placed a condition that the trees in the frontage and the trees adjacent to the buildings, and particularly the trees at the rear of the site or the north side of the site, be 24-inch boxed for more immediate effect for the benefit of the residents. And that concludes staff's presentation. If the commission has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, and our applicant is in the audience.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners of staff? I have one question. Do you have a, do you have an image of the east-facing of the buildings?
I don't believe there is. Oh, actually, this is one of the sides of the building. This would be the west-facing side. The east-facing side is similar. I believe there was an additional pop-out on that east-facing side.
When that came before study session, I had asked that we spruce that up, basically because as people are driving by, that's what they're going to see, the residents and whatnot, or visitors. Can you tell me, were there any modifications made to the east side? Because since we don't have any images.
No, there was no change to that eastern side of the plan from the, the version that was seen at the study session.
I don't listen to you, Robert.
Evidently not. Okay. Thank you very much, Frank. Any further questions? No? All right. Well, why don't we hear from the applicant? Did you state your name and address?
Tom Martinez, 2624 Air Park Drive. I am the architect on the project. Those elevations were, as we were providing to staff. We had talked about at that second level on the easterly side that we could rotate, and we discussed at the study session, that we could rotate the upstairs elements so that we could pop out the, and I have a copy here of it.
I saw it. So the pop-out was the ad? Okay, I just wanted, okay.
Approximately five foot wide by two, and we popped it out two and a half foot, popped out the restroom, just, so we have some architectural relief in there, as commission had requested.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else you'd like to?
The only other thing that we came up after study session, staff indicated that there was going to be a requirement for a decorative masonry wall on the north side facing battles. And there are a couple of different masonry walls in that area. It's a long section with nothing going on. Typically, when we have walls that look like that, we find staff ask for pylasters just to break up that visual. So what we had proposed, and staff asked us to present to you, was to do a decorative, but with pylasters and a wood infill. It would actually create a much softer appearance, so if I could...
Please, yeah. Brian?
Brian. Go ahead and start down there. That's all right.
There is a section of the, of that wall that is existing on a neighbor's property to the west of the, of our project. And the picture's not very clear. I'm not a professional photographer, and just cranked it up this afternoon. But you can see that the horizontal supports or nailing supports for the fencing are visible, because what they did is they wanted it finished on the apartment side. What we would propose to do is similar to what is on that lower photo, so that you trim it out so that it's smooth on both sides, and you don't see that, that horizontal element. That way, it looks finished from battles, and it looks finished from the apartment side.
I'm sorry. So is it a, is it a, how do you have the support?
Yeah, how do you do that?
Typically, and the, the, the lower picture is a similar configuration, but what we normally do is we would take a two-by-six, box it out, and then put a two-by-two trimmer that you set your board up onto, and then you put a stop in front of it. That way, it's finished on both sides, and it's really not nailed. It's just cleated with a two-by-two member. So it's basically trimmed out like a window trim would, would appear.
Appreciate that.
And it gives it a nice finished appearance from both sides. We feel that this would eliminate the need, because staff was recommending masonry wall with holes so that you could grow some vines through it. You have no control over that growth. More often than not, especially if you have tenants, that stuff disappears. With this, we think we could eliminate the need for any vines on that, because it's going to be a softer visual from both sides. Aside from that, I think everything else is, you know, been resolved with staff, and I may myself leave for any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Questions from commissioners?
Oh, just a comment. Just, I like the wall. I like this wall compromise. And I'm, have no data to back this up, but it seems like people don't graffiti wood walls as much as if it was a solid brick wall. I mean, it, so this seems like a good solution to that, too, because that area is like screaming for vandal, you know, battles has a lot of kind of transient traffic that could.
But, well, but the thing is, is that along that strip, I, I've driven by it the last few weeks because, because of, as we're going through the process. It's interesting, that observation, because there is very little graffiti there. And I think it is because there's only smaller schoolchildren that are accessing that pathway to go to battle school. There's no teenage activity, as, as some of the, some of the block walls that you'll see leaning towards the high school.
Yeah.
Where you see the graffiti. But, yeah, you very seldom see it on wood, but quite often on masonry. Oh, you know, one thing I did forget to mention, you discussed the access off of that battles right-of-way. I believe the property, and we would need to research it, but I believe it has prescriptive rights for that access, because they've had, they have an open gate there. My dad used to work for Fitzgerald Trucking probably 50 years ago, and that gate is still there. So, and I, I believe prescriptive right, I don't know, Phil can probably say, I think it's three years that you can establish that if it's not been blocked?
Off the top of my head, I think it's five.
Okay. But they, yeah, they've, they've used the property, and it's, that gate has been there, like I say, for at least 50 years. So I believe they have prescriptive rights. I don't know that we'd have to go get anything. I don't believe they got anything when they established their landscaping business there.
Nice. Further questions? Or, just a quick comment from me, a couple of quick comments, Tom. First of all, I, I appreciate you putting that, that bump out on the second floor. Thank you. Oh, yeah, absolutely. Sorry. You know, that's the same picture you have.
Oh, it's the same.
Yeah, yeah. It's the same.
Oh, I just, the bump-out picture.
Oh, you know, he's, he's got it again.
That rendering, yeah.
There you go. But it's in your packet, actually. It's, it's there, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Right. And, and thank you also for the 24-inch box, because that's, that'll help the, make it look nice for your tenants right away, so.
We have, we have, and I have to say, we have had a lot of objections from other clients about the 24-inch box.
I know. I know you have.
Because of the cost of them. In this particular instance, because they, they own a landscaping company, J.B. Hickman.
Nice. They understand. See, they, they get it.
They can get, they can get a deal on this.
Yeah, right.
Now I just need you to talk to a bunch of the others. Phil, a quick question for you. The, that second paragraph on 14, I mean, is that, I mean, obviously, if they, if, if you can't put the, the gate there, or the, the slap opening, then, then that's one thing, but 14?
I'm sorry. I was looking on page 14.
No, no, no. Number 14, second paragraph.
Yes.
Is there a general feeling from legal that they should be able to put that access? We were talking about it in terms from, if you recall, from study session, for, mostly it's an emergency thing for, for, you know, in case there's a fire or something.
Yeah, I was just chatting with David about that. I, I know you can't establish prescriptive rights against a public entity or a railroad. I don't know if you can against an oil company, but David seemed to think that there was something on title. So I would like to keep the language in there with documentation.
Sure, sure.
That if you want to make it a requirement, that's fine, but it would still be subject to their legal right to actually do that.
Do it, yeah.
And if they don't, they, I hope that that's not required for fire code or safety reasons. But I don't think it, I don't think it is. It's just the Europe being extra cautious, right?
Yeah. I mean, I, I hope it's not extra cautious. It's just generally cautious, so.
Yeah.
It's not a required fire access. We have the, the access is within the complex. There's a center strip of parking that makes a loop, and we have presented previously to a fire department, the turning radiuses, so we had, you know, unfortunately, they got a bigger fire truck, so all of those have grown.
Right.
And, but we have, we have worked that out with fire, and I think Mr. Delgado would attest to that, being satisfying their requirements.
For me, it's just, for, and I imagine the same way for all the commissioners, I, I would never want to be in a situation where there is a fire at the, at the front of that facility, and then people start coming back to us and saying, geez, why did all those families burn to death?
Oh, God.
I just don't want to be in that position, okay? So there you go. And no problem in changing may to shall?
No.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, Tom. Let's see here. Pardon me. Pardon me. Anything else for Mr. Martinez? No? All right, then I will bring the, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to us. And any discussions by commissioners or any motions that need to be made?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept conditional use permits U2016-0016 with the slight revision to item number 14, that if they are able to approve right of way access, that they will include an emergency access door at that northern wall.
So shifting the word may to shall?
Shall, mm-hmm.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Was there anything about the fence or who's that?
Acting Chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I would suggest one other change to the condition. You heard Mr. Martinez mention the vine planting.
Oh.
So the last sentence of the first paragraph.
Of which?
Of the screen, of number 14 as well?
Correct.
Oh. Oh, right.
So strike that and, and replace it with the suggested item from the applicant. Is that, is that good for staff? Does that work for you?
Well, except it's not going to be a masonry screen wall, it's going to be a plastered brick wood combo wall, right?
I would suggest, if I may, just stating decorative masonry slash wood, combination masonry slash wood.
As discussed by applicant.
Correct. As depicted on the graphic distributed at the meeting. I will second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate your love of trees tremendously.
Twenty-four foot box all the way. Twenty-four inch box.
Tongue in cheek, tongue in cheek, we were going to suggest mini storage.
I can't find two.
That's right, that's right, comrade.
Thank you, yeah.
We're going to take a five-minute break.
He wishes.